Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety Committee. I am Chair of the Committee, Mark Conway, representing the 4th District. In attendance today, I have Vice Chair of the Committee Zach Blanchard of the 11th District, and Danielle McCray of the 2nd District, member of the committee. We are represented by the administration from Tylo Chanel, Jennifer Haslam from the Fire Department, Commissioner Warley from the Police Department, Acting Commissioner Michelle Taylor of the Health Department, and Stephanie Mavronis of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. Our committee staff for the day is Julien. Thank you. And today's Legislative Committee meeting is LO-25-0013, Legislative Oversight, Opioids, Harm Reduction, and Violence Prevention. In this July, the committee met to discuss the same topic and heard from public health professionals, advocates, and city agencies. And during that hearing, we discussed the prevalence of the impact of open-air drug markets, and I requested a plan from the Police Department, from the Police Department, from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement, and otherwise, we'll be discussing that today. We are now weeks removed from the mass overdose events at Penn and North Ave, where dozens of people were hospitalized, many in critical condition. And that tragedy should have been a turning point for Baltimore. Since September of last year, I've been asking for a comprehensive plan to address open-air drug markets. I've asked in writing, I've asked in hearings, I've asked in private. Month after month, hearing after hearing, our agencies have come here without a plan. They know the stakes. They know that this neighborhood, and many others like it, are going through a lot. Yet today, we are still here, waiting for a blueprint for action. If the heads of our agencies are here today without a plan, I'm keen to hear why that is the case. Meanwhile, I've introduced a bill to expand access to buprenorphine, one of the most effective tools we have to keep people alive long enough to recover. And this has still not received consideration by this body. The evidence for buprenorphine is not controversial. It keeps people alive and stabilizes them long enough to begin recovery. In a city that has lost so many, leaving this bill in a drawer is a policy choice with grave consequences. The answer as to why this bill has not so much as received a hearing rests with this body, and this body alone. But we know that every week without action is another week where people who could have started treatment after an overdose are sent back to the streets at risk of death. Taken together, these delays tell a clear story. City Hall is not treating this like the public health emergency that it is. Data requests go unanswered, plans go unwritten, and legislation goes unheard. Let me be clear. I don't blame the dedicated servants sitting in front of me here today. I don't. They are ready with work. They have shown up time and time again, and when they failed to deliver, it's because they have not been empowered to deliver. And I don't put this entirely on my colleagues, on the council either. Many are here to act, but too often, we allow the administration to dictate when and how this council will lead. When the 2nd floor signals that the action is unwelcome, too many often fall in line. City Hall sets the tone. City Hall sets the priorities. When it blocks progress, the whole city stands still, and the people of Baltimore pay the price. That's why for me, today cannot be another box-checking exercise. Everything I will ask today will be aimed at answering two questions. Why has the city failed to act? And how do we make it better? Let's get started. First up, we're going to start with reports from agencies. I'm going to turn it over to Ty Loor first to introduce the agencies. Ty Loor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for having us back. We're happy to obviously continue this discussion on our work, which is grounded in the Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan and supported by BPD's daily enforcement actions. Today, obviously, as you said, Mr. Chair, you'll hear from BPD kind of on, you know, where they are with enforcement actions, and you'll hear from MONC on stabilization efforts. And at the request of the committee, obviously, we do have representatives to include our Acting Commissioner of Health, Dr. Michelle Taylor, here present today, as well as members from her team. And Jen has Dr. Loffler with her. Did I pronounce his name correctly? I'm sorry, Dr. Launer, from the Fire Department, the Chief Medical Officer. Yeah. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Warley, I think.
I'm going to give it to Aaron, Chief of Staff Murphy, and DC Jones to do our slides.
Good afternoon, Chairman Conway, Vice Chairman Blanchard, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to present today the Baltimore Police Department's operational initiatives. Our remarks will cover deployment strategies, intelligence functions, and our collaborative collaboration with city agencies through MADEF and our Blitz initiatives. Next slide, please. Thank you. This slide reflects comparative data on controlled dangerous substance arrests from January through August of both 2024 and 2025. This goal is just to highlight trends, shifts, and enforcement priorities and outcomes of our deployment strategies. It is important to note whether the data indicates decrease due to proactivity diversion strategies or an increase tied to targeted enforcement. We have seen some significant increases in our CDS, both felony and misdemeanor arrests. Next slide, please. Our deployment strategy in reference to deployment and B6 model integrates both district action teams with Operational Intelligence Section and the Baltimore County, Baltimore Community Intelligence Center, also known as our B6. The mission is to transform raw data into actionable intelligence. Objectives include stopping emerging crime patterns, preventing retaliation, identifying key offenders, and supporting district-level commanders with real-time crime and analysis. After this slide, I will pass it off to Lieutenant Colonel Velti. But basically, reference to our B6 teams, currently B6 teams, B6 teams are embodied in seven of our nine districts. They ensure intelligence sharing across geographies, geographic boundaries, since crime is not limited to district lines. District commanders receive consistent briefings and timely reports that guide operational decisions. This structure strengthens collaborations between intelligence analysts and on-the-ground commanders. This is backed up, I will say, by multiple crime calls daily for each district throughout the agency, as well as our universal comstat that is held every Thursday at 10 o'clock. Now, I will pass it to LTC Velti for the next slides.
Good afternoon, Court of Health, Chief of Crime Strategies and Intelligence Division. Just to touch a little bit on the BCICs, the Baltimore Community Intelligence Centers. At their very heart, they are designed to collect, validate, and disseminate intelligence in a way that is not only accurate and timely, but actionable as well to district commanders, district action teams, and any other ancillary units that the Commissioner and Deputy Commissioners seem fit to disseminate it to, to translate into street-level enforcement. Really, they are assigned to identify early on and try to stop crime patterns from robbery, trends to carjacking trends, to violence stemming between drug trafficking organizations. You really want to focus on the preventing violence and retaliation when we look at DTOs that we've learned through our GVRS strategy, that when you get DTOs that engage in cycles of retaliatory violence, it drives violence throughout the city, not just within a certain district. They are charged essentially with identifying, help identifying group members and targets as well, to stop that cycle of violence by educating the district commanders, as well as the DAT teams, as to what the deployment should be, what shifts they need in deployments to attack the violence within their districts. They do so not only by identifying the groups, but the specific offenders within those groups, or standalone offenders that are causing problems within a district. And that district-level support comes in many forms. A standardized intelligence brief that not only suggests where you should be deployed, but it also highlights folks in those areas that are wanted on warrants, might be recidivists. And that is not just given to district commanders, that is briefed at roll-call rooms to effectuate the shift commander having a good knowledge based on where their troops need to be for that shift. As indicated by the Deputy Commissioner, seven of our nine districts have BCICs now currently, and what we noticed that the crime is not limited by district boundaries, or criminals don't abide by them. In April, under the Commissioner's direction, we centralized intelligence under the new Division of Crime Strategies, Intelligence Division essentially wrapping Homeland Security, GBU, all of the seven BCICs and nine district intelligence officers under one central command, so we can begin to standardize things and work operationally citywide to benefit individual districts. It works well because you have the BCICs that are housed within the districts that still have that intimate knowledge of the communities that they serve there specifically, but the advantage of the force multiplier working with the other BCICs, I suppose, the intelligence flowing in citywide to address and attack problems citywide. We've seen some really good success since bringing it under one umbrella. They do things, you know, the regular briefings include a whole host of things where we're looking for precursors like founded dischargings. Well, they will look at discharging as an area and say, look, we know this DTO operates in this area, this could be problems. Is there a beef with this DTO and another one? If so, where would we deploy for both halves of this confrontation to get in front of it before an act of violence is committed with a shooting or a homicide? They'll look at things like NiBEN leads collaborating with our CGIC team to see where these weapons have been used recently or in the past, to see if we can map out any patterns of violence or trends tied them to DTOs specifically, or anything of that nature.
Can you make sure to speak into the mic?
Yes, sir. Another great tool that they utilize, jail calls to help build out intelligence, we utilize social media, LPRs, a whole host of things. At the end of the day, at its core, the BCIC team is to really educate the district commanders as to their deployments, it is to help identify the drug shops that are most concerning within their districts, it is to then break down individuals within those drug shops to be targeted.
As a request from a member, and I'm sure other folks are afraid to admit this, can you make sure to explain the acronyms that you're using, just so that folks listening along are aware what you're talking about?
So, DTO, drug trafficking organizations. So essentially, what we want to do is we are learning a little bit what we did from GVRS attacking the violence, as far as the analytical portion on the front end, and you've seen the success in getting in front of some of the group violence this year, and we're kind of starting to apply that across the board to some other things in some different forms, where we start to look at the drug shops. The DC can attest that as you started rotating it into comstat, where we're starting to look at, we're pulling for the district commanders. Where are your most calls for service? Where are you seeing your overdoses? And then really starting to look analytically at some of the property crimes that sometimes coexist with those suffering from addiction, larceny, larceny from auto, things of that nature, that might indicate a very active drug shop as well. We start to rotate that into comstat as well to move forward. A lot of that is quarterbacked through the BCICs and the district intelligence officers. One of the main functions also of the district intel division would be the validation, identification of group members. This not only ties into GVRS, but it had been previously mostly only GBU units, as well as the district intel officer under the reorganization. We have trained numerous folks to do the identification and validation of group members to get them into Case Explorer. While this might not seem like a huge step, it's really kind of the crux. It's extremely important to build out accurately members of drug trafficking organizations, so we know that when we go in, we can have an educated deployment on who we want to extract. I think that becomes really important when we start to look at those carrying overdoses, because what we don't want to do is go in and over-arrest folks that are suffering from addiction, maybe buyers or have other issues with mental health. What we want to do is be able to focus on those that are selling the CDS in those areas, the controlled dangerous substances that are causing the overdoses, and having this laid-out function and organization mapped out in compliance with state law is extremely helpful in doing that. You know, year-to-date, the BCICs have entered 163 group members, the majority tied to drug trafficking organizations. They also assist in arrests by monitoring CityWatch cameras, that's another function they do, and most of those CityWatch cameras are being utilized to monitor drug trafficking organizations. They have assisted in over 300 arrests since becoming under CSID in April, early April, 34 handgun arrests, 44 CDS violation, a host of others, robbery, burglary, stolen auto, 67 persons wanted on warrants, and 16 search and seizure warrants. While the collaboration is good, the intel seems to be flowing better than I've seen it in 31 years here with the department. We are constantly evolving, taking a look at how we're doing it. I think moving forward, some of the BCICs will be tasked with also handling some investigations on their own, specifically as it ties to some of the drug trafficking organizations that could be monitored. We've seen some success from that in the Southern District along the Washington Boulevard corridor earlier this year, where Southern District OIS 9, Operation Intelligence 9 that BCIC, conducted their own investigation along that corridor, reference to a drug trafficking organization that had multiple calls for service. There was some founded discharging and a non-fatal shooting, which drew their attention down there. They orchestrated some CI things, some surveillance, ended up serving search and seizure warrants. They seized over a kilo of cocaine, some street-level packaging of cocaine, firearm, and several thousand dollars in cash. Three or four members of that drug trafficking organization were extracted. So that's kind of the way we're moving now. Primary function of the BCICs will remain that vetting of intelligence, informing not only the district commanders, shift commanders, post officers on the street, and then we will have informed deployments as to who should be where for DAT teams, post officers, or any other ancillary units.
Thank you, LTC Velti. So before I pass it to the next slide in reference to our MADEF and Chief Reynolds, I will just say that, you know, outside of the law enforcement response, we realize that there is a contagion of blight that we have to deal with, so we realize the Multi-Agency Inspection Task Force, which as often as I can, I try to be a part of every Wednesday. It touched my heart this last Wednesday, we were at Old Town Mall. It meant a lot to me, being an Eastsider, remembering where I grew up at, going down to East, going down to Old Town Mall every weekend. So seeing some revitalization efforts in that area, realizing that this task force was created to combine city services with police operations. One of the key tools, of course, is the Blitz Initiative, and I will pass it to Chief Reynolds.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Lisa Reynolds, and I am short, and Chief of Youth and Community Partnerships. Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. The Blitzes are coordinated strategic efforts with inter-agency involvement that address the environmental issues and service needs of a particular area. Anything from vacant buildings to business-related issues, unhoused individuals, abandoned vehicles. We look at illegal dumping, trash and debris, and environmental factors, to name a few. One of the things I wanted to point out is we function as a team. We all have a common goal, we are sharing responsibilities, and we hold each other accountable to make sure that we deliver and have outcomes. So our goals, as the slide says, is to strengthen relationships with the community and improve environmental conditions related to safety and quality of life. We engage partners in problem-solving. We are performing these in all nine districts. We're working with the majors, the NCOs, and looking at the calls for service to see where that footprint needs to be. In addition to that, we do a debrief following the Blitz the next day, where we, all the agencies report out on what we covered, what still needs to be addressed, and then also have a place for where we can enter hot topics. So majors can call in if they have issues in certain communities, and their Blitz might be scheduled further out. I know we worked with Summer Youth Engagement around the lighting with Rashfield. If an issue comes up, we had one come up at the 5400 block of York Road that we were able to address for Major Saunders in that district in between her Blitzes. So in addition to that, you can go to the next slide, please. Where are we headed? So what we're trying to do is to continue the momentum of what we're doing with the MADEF, and we're now working closely with MONC to build out a learning session. And that learning session, we're going to come together and talk about lessons learned, we're going to review the data. We know that there's areas that we need to work better on, so we're building out a stronger system for how we're logging and following up on 3-1-1 requests. And then, of course, the resource component, which really hits point of what are the service needs of those in the community? Addressing those needs that require services to actually change their trajectory. We also want to ensure we build in stabilization needs with MONC and GVRS for post-action takedown events, and support areas of emerging concern. We adjust the schedule when needed, just like we did with Lexington Market, we did with Penn North, moving things around to meet the needs of the city. I think what's most important, and is a typo on this slide that I want to clarify, is community voice and feedback. So what we're going to do prior to the Lessons Learned event is be deliberate in our intention to make sure that we're still including the community as we move forward. That's going to take us, meeting with the community organizations prior to the learning event, and really planning for their involvement, having them present, and being able to voice their needs. The key questions we want to know is how can we involve them in the community more in planning for this? What would they like to include, and how can we communicate after we've done the event to say, have the needs been taken care of? Were things not addressed? And then what are we missing and what is going well? Being intentional there is really a spot where we're taking this MADEF to the next level. Next slide. So as we move from transactional to sustainability, we're going to try to be, we want to be more inclusive and ensure follow-up for resource needs and 3-1-1 matters. We understand the circumstances within the community that lead to public safety concerns, require efforts together in that footprint, as well as a coordinated resource deployment to assist and improve the quality of life. And our goal is ensuring that continued collaboration and open dialogues with each other, holding each other accountable, will make sure that we meet the current and proposed MADEF 2.0 objectives.
As you see, we do have quite a comprehensive plan to deal with the open-air drug markets, but I also want to go back to a conversation that you and I had, Councilman Conway, at the library when we had the overdose meeting, and the fact that we want to ultimately get to the supplier of the drugs. The way we get to the supplier of the drugs is by arresting the dealers. But the way we get to the dealers is by arresting the users, and there's no way around it. We have to arrest purchasers so that we can link the drugs that they're purchasing to the drugs that are being sold by the dealer. And we can't do that unless we arrest some of the purchasers. Now, they can get the wraparound services once they go to jail or go to court, but those have to be done in order for us to get to the supplier, and we do that every single day. But there are so many open-air drug markets here in the city, we're not going to, some of them have been operating for 20, 30 years. We're not going to be able to shut down every one, and if you recall, I'm sure you do, we just started doing the misdemeanor drug arrests about two and a half years ago, three years ago, because for two years, we didn't make any arrests for misdemeanor drugs. We made a few, but it wasn't being prosecuted. And you saw our arrests have gone up in both felony and misdemeanor, and a lot of that is linked also to the violence and part of the group violence reduction strategy with the drug trafficking organizations. So we do have a comprehensive plan for dealing with them, it's just going to take us some time to get to every single one that's around the city.
Thank you, Commissioner. I want to acknowledge a couple of folks that have joined and some have already stepped out of the meeting, one being Council President Z. Cohen. Thank you, and Councilman Yitschleifer, Representative of the 5th District. Next up, we have a presentation from MONC, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee. My name's Stephanie Mavronis, Director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. Could you go to the next slide, please? So as you heard the administration mention earlier, MONC, of course, is not a law enforcement agency, as we're thinking about our role in engaging dismantling with open-air drug markets enforcement, as you heard, falls under the purview of the Baltimore Police Department. However, we are the agency responsible for the Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan. A number of the strategies that are named in that plan intersect with open-air drug markets, typically where there is that direct connection to violence as a way for us to prioritize them. And so we can go to the next slide to jump into a little bit of the strategies here. So where we primarily see these intersections of MONC's violence prevention work within the Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan, starting with coordinated neighborhood stabilization responses, we implement and activate these responses, very similar to the model that you just heard Lisa talk about with the Multi-Agency Inspection Task Force, but really building that over a month and a half, or even a longer period of time, typically in response to traumatic events, violent events, so police-involved shootings, multiple victim incidents, youth victimizations, takedowns from the group violence reduction strategy, and other rapid response situations. We've also been deploying some shorter-term activations that we call community responses. These may not last for up to 45 days, but still constitute an inter-agency response and engagement in the community. Typically, we're proactively identifying those locations where we see an elevated risk of future violence, deep neighborhood trauma, or repeated violence over a two-week period in a small geography. So really makes us want to have some level of response there. And these scenarios may or may not involve open-air drug markets, but we have had stabilizations, we have had community responses where a specific corner may be identified by community members as an issue, and our team may attempt some engagement in those scenarios. When we think about the group violence reduction strategy, as you've heard from the Police Department, we're thinking about direct interventions with people who are engaged in group violence, which has sometimes led to the dismantling of open-air drug markets where group violence is involved. So again, that qualifier is engagement in group violence, and where it intersects with the drug market, that's where you would see our agency play a role in engaging with this issue. We can go to the next slide. So while the group violence reduction strategy does provide some useful lessons, it is not a strategy to address open-air drug markets on its own. As I mentioned, we're focusing on those violent groups, it is a people-based, not-place-based engagement, but we're using the information about homicides and shootings today to stage those interventions with people most likely to be involved in violence as the victim or perpetrator tomorrow. I'll say that our success here is tied to a strong focus on violence, and so we want to make sure that we're maintaining our focus on that, we're continuing to prioritize our engagements based on violence as the prerequisite, and that's, you know, one of our cornerstone strategies within the Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan. I will leave my presentation there, as it was mostly focused on the Violence Prevention Plan, and happy to answer any questions from the committee.
Thank you, Director. We're going to open up to questions from the committee. I have a bunch. Appreciate the presentations. I think, first, I'll say with the presentation from the BPD, I appreciate what we're presenting here. I think I'm looking for something different. I think we're looking for a comprehensive approach for violence prevention. I realize you guys have a role in that, and some of the things that you've discussed will be helpful in that broader approach. But an issue of this magnitude, I think, requires much, much more than what we've seen here. And I think with, also to that end, I think what was presented from MONC is still a broad plan around violence, which we need, and we are seeing significant success in part due to that plan. What I'm calling for here is a similar approach for our drug shops. To give you some perspective, I've been asking for this, it's been 364 days. I asked for this on September 11th, 2024. I asked for it again on November 13th, 2024, the last hearing we had in this committee at the end of the last term. And I asked for it March 11th, the first hearing that we held as a committee in this new term. So this has been a reoccurring issue. So this has been a reoccurring issue that we know we have and we need to address. Part of the reason why I focus on this so much is because we have made significant progress in violence, and that is truly admirable. But we all know we still have significant complaints and significant problems in certain corners, in certain communities, that have prevented people from having, you know, thriving businesses, that have prevented people from feeling safe in their home. And unfortunately, it's these same drug shops that occasionally have violence, including one in my district recently. So this has been an issue, and I have to say, I'm disappointed with what has been provided here today. It has not met my standard. So I'll come off that. When I asked for that plan, I think I was pretty clear with what I wanted. I also would love to see some feedback and collaboration with the Health Department. You know, there should be some cross-pollination happening there, making sure that we're helping people dealing with addiction in these drug markets, while we are also focused on the folks doing the drug dealing. So I'm not seeing what I want to see here. I just, I want to be crystal clear in that regard. What has been presented is not sufficient for what I'm looking for. So to that effect, it's been a year. Do we have a written plan prepared for today?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. And just, again, just to restate for the public, Tyler Chanel, Deputy Director for Government Relations for the Mayor. We have a plan, right? Our approach to open-air drug markets is included within our work through the Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan and BPD's daily enforcement action. The fact is, as you heard from BPD, drug arrests in the city are up. But we don't measure our success based on the number of arrests. As you know, that has been the previous way that folks have sought to address this issue, and we know it doesn't work. BPD makes day-to-day operational and investigative decisions based on what could have the most impact in our communities. While we obviously won't go into like any individual investigative decisions, when we're talking about this issue, it's important to remember that there are circumstances where a police officer may forego a single arrest in pursuit of a larger investigation targeted at taken-down drug organizations. And to be clear around the ask for a GPRS model for drug dealing, it is important to remember that GPRS is already delivering the outcomes that you're referencing. If you look at some of the most recent takedowns that have come out as a result of GPRS's work, the vast majority of them have resulted in the takedown of large drug organizations. But we do have to note that GPRS is just one tool. It is not the tool that we use to, you know, do this work in our pursuit to, you know, decrease in violence and stem in the sale of illegal drugs in our city. So I think it's, it's a little disingenuous to say that we don't have a plan because we do.
And I'll tell you why. If we were to go out to Penn and North right now, not only does it look the same, but we don't have a plan to change it. That's the problem. And I'm not necessarily expecting that we're going to boil the ocean and address every drug corner across our city. That's not what I'm asking for. I'm asking for a theory of change that we're going to test or implement that will strategically dismantle drug shops. That's what I'm asking for. And we could roll something out there. It might not work initially. Maybe it's more complicated than we initially thought. But we don't even, we're not even trying. We're not even trying. And that's where I struggle. I know, I know, I know, I know. Violence is still paramount. That is my highest priority and will always be my highest priority. But until we dismantle open-air drug shops, we're going to continue to see violence. That's still going to happen. And then we can prioritize. But the problem is, I hear from my constituents that we know this is an issue on said corner and has been the case for years, decades in many instances. These are not new problems, but we have yet to figure out how to change that permanently. So I totally understand, both Director and Deputy Director, you know, how you guys are doing great work, but I'm asking for something different here. And, you know, every time a constituent comes to me frustrated because they've got a drug shop in their neighborhood that has been seemingly able to continue without any real intervention, and we don't have a plan to dismantle it, it's incredibly frustrating. And people get verbally upset with me and all of my colleagues, and I've got to sit here and listen to it. And when we come into these meetings, I'm not the one screaming at you. That's not generally, you know, the way that I handle it, but other members have been incredibly frustrated. Councilman Glover is not here today, right now, but he has been very vocal about this issue in the 13th District. So I think, if, and Council President, if I'm not being clear here, what I want is for us to try to address the problem and not just assume that because it's, we don't see violence, that it's okay. It's not okay.
Yeah, and thank you for that, Mr. Chair. And to go back to what's happening at Penn North, right? I want to be clear that we have not left Penn North since the day we got there. At this moment, there, if I'm not mistaken, there are members from MONC still doing work at Penn North, right? That is a very sensitive issue that we're dealing with there. You're talking about people who need treatment, people who have to make a personal decision to walk away from a lifestyle. That is tough. That is not work that you do overnight. That is work that you do over decades, right? And so what we're trying, what we're doing there, we're giving out the Narcan, we are porting people to resources. If people are ready, we're ready to take them. But people have to make that decision for themselves. And what we cannot do in this chamber is report to the public that nothing is happening.
So I'll ask this question. When was the last meeting we had about Penn and North, where you had MONC, BPD, and the Health Department, and anybody else? When was the last time we had a meeting about Penn and North?
I'm not sure off the top of my head.
I'll ask the folks here. We have all the leaders in charge?
I had one yesterday with, no, Monday with, what's the day? Tuesday, Wednesday?
Today's Tuesday.
Had a meeting yesterday with the Mayor and Deputy Mayor about it, and my staff about the progress of the investigation.
Okay. And what commitments did we make that will further progress on addressing the open-air drug market? You mentioned investigations from MONC. Are we trying to offer alternatives, alternative lifestyles for these gentlemen that we know are there day in, day out? Health Department? I mean, I know we're out there regularly, but, you know, are we taking any further innovations on helping people dealing with addiction in the area?
I think, sir, for me, just real quick, so I think it's a little bit of all of that. So working with MONC, working with the Health Department, when we talk about the multi-agency inspection task force, you know, BPD is representative there, represented there. MONC is representative. DPW, the Health Department in reference to the Needle Exchange Program. So all of us are there talking about collectively, how do we address this area? I think to the PC's point, we know that, you know, compared to last year, CDS arrests were 16%.
What commitments were made?
But I think that is the commitment, sir.
I want to be clear that the purpose here is the outcome. The outcome is we've dismantled that drug market, and the only way we can assess that is if it's done. And so if we've made commitments and it hasn't worked...
But when you talk about the overdoses in Penn and North, we're talking about this time, so August 31st compared to 2024, when it comes to overdoses for Penn and North, there were 43 calls for overdoses in Penn and North versus 89 in 2024. So there has been a 51% reduction in calls for overdoses for that area, which does show a significant decrease in the response by not only BPD, but our partners in addressing that area. Will it be changed in a day? It will not. Will it be changed in a month? It will not. But I think we do have boots on the ground there that are responding to that area because we know it is a holistic problem there, sir.
And obviously, Chair, I know you and I have talked about this several times. I just want to mention very few things. Number one, there, and I'm not suggesting you are saying this, but I think there is some thought where, great, homicides and shootings are down, we can go shift. That is not how it works. We are going to continue, as men and women of BPD do every day, to have to continue to police, to make sure that that stays down. At no point does BPD ever feel that open-air drug markets are something that we want to see. They have been here since, I'm old, before I was born, and it is definitely an all-hands-on-deck. I think, you know, what Cardinal Velti was explaining is, BPD has done a lot under, you know, Commissioner Worthy's leadership to sort of combine this intelligence. And some of the things are things that we aren't going to discuss in open, you know, so I want to be clear, BPD takes it seriously. I do understand what you're saying, but a lot of times there are things that people might not see. So just want to, and obviously, what would be great also, I think we could all agree, you know that one of the things we like to do is encourage our officers to get out of the cars. They're doing that. We have young officers out on the street. It would be great, as we know, sometimes with drug markets, our officers will go out and engage. That's one of the things we teach them. They don't want to stand there and talk to us. But what do most people say? Then they tend to move, right? So it would be wonderful if we got staffed up to the point where we could put an officer on every street. And that's why every time we come over here, we explain how hard we're working on recruitment. I just want to mention that. We have a new recruitment car out with QR codes that we're getting hits. We're doing everything we can to staff up. I just want to be clear that I do understand what you've been asking for, but I want to make sure that you understand that it is not as if our focus is only on, you know, the violence, and I want to make sure the public understands that open-air drug markets matter to us.
I would like a written plan, a written plan that we can be held to, that we can assess for whether or not it's had the outcomes that we would hope that it would have. I mean, you guys have given me a number of things that, you know, at least for the Police Department, that we should be doing. And there are potential overlaps, even with GPRS, that we can apply if we should roll this out. So the fact that it's been 364 days, and we know how significant of an issue this is, and we don't have a plan, and we're just meeting ad hoc and not clear with our commitments and the outcomes that we're expecting from those commitments, is a problem for me. I know you guys work incredibly hard. You're also incredibly smart. I talk with you all the time. You understand what's going on here. I understand what's going on here. We need to be clear about what we're doing and how we expect that to change what's happening in our streets. That's all. It doesn't have to be Penn and North. It could be somewhere else. We can test out an idea and see whether or not those interventions actually result in the dismantling of an open-air drug market. But my point here is until we clearly state what we are doing to address the issue, we're just doing activity. We don't know what's working. And frankly, it's not working. I'm going to hand off to someone else on the committee. I'm sure there are questions.
Pleasure.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I got, I think, three things to kind of dig into. Before I start with that, just a thought on the data presented on the CDS arrests and whatnot. Something I've noticed in general is like, there's been so much fluctuation with crime and policing trends over the last, like, four years, that it's like when we always get quoted as like, hey, here's how much crime has dropped since 2024. But actually, what, or sorry, how much homicides have dropped since 2024, but really what is the incredible thing is how much homicides have dropped since 2022, right? And so like, I would just, I think like here, the Commissioner had made kind of the reference to the CDS-related arrest and how that has changed the last couple of years. I do think it is important to know, like, how does, you know, it's a real, but a, you know, a moderate increase from '25 to '24. I would be interested to know, like, what were these numbers in 2022?
So part of that issue, obviously, was under a previous State's Attorney, that there was no prosecution under there, so some of that data, but I'm happy to go back further, but that's part of the reason why it's at...
Oh, yeah, no, I fully understand. And I mean, I think it's a testament to the city's, like, overall shift in the strategy. And it's, it's just, it's a better pic, it's a more useful picture to paint. So just one thing to think about there.
And I can jump in there too, because I want to explain some things with them. Thank you for the question. 2022, they were most nonexistent. Even in 2023, '24, '25, with the technology that we have, we can see, we can sit and watch a camera and think that someone is doing, dealing drugs. But you have to be able to articulate exactly what that person is exchanging. So technology's great, but we still can't use really cameras to do drug arrests. We can move our people into the area, they pull up the stop and talk to the individuals who did the exchange if they have reasonable articulable suspicion. And then we can move on from there. But I get a lot of things all the time, well, you can clearly see it on the video that they're dealing drugs. Well, we can assume, but it's not going to get...
Useful for information, but not for like charging. Yeah, no, I understand. Speaking of data, and I think kind of where the, something the Chair is kind of hitting on is like, you know, like with GPRS, what's kind of convenient with, like homicides and shootings is the data is actually, like, we have that, it's straightforward, as you say, hey, is it working? Well, look at how, you know, homicides have dropped in this area over time, right? How would we even, what, you know, to the point about we're not trying to like, just say, hey, arrests are up, so we know this problem is, one, because we're not trying to use arrest as a, as like a metric, right, as a single metric, and just increase the number of arrests because that doesn't solve the problem and is causing other problems. But like, what, what is the data that we have or could put together so that we know, like Lexington Market area in my district, I know there's a nonprofit doing great work, who, you know, they think that things are moving in the right direction there for the last couple of years. I hear other things from other people who are, you know, meaningfully involved in that. How do we figure out, like, what data can we put together on drug market-related stuff? I don't know who this question's going to. It might be to MONC here.
So I'll take it, and then I'll pass it to Stephanie. She wants to jump in. So, you know, it's multifaceted. I will say, some of the metrics that we use, that I look into, you look in specific calls for service for narcotics in that area. So that would be one. You look for overdose. You look for narcotics-related arrests. When we have our GPRS meetings, when we have our district intel meetings, we're having conversations about how well do you understand and know the operators within that drug trafficking organization? How large is that drug trafficking organization? When are the hours that they operate? How many people are on the corner? Are there lookouts? Are there towders? Are there people who are armed? We look through a multitude of things, right? Is it an area where it's a call-up shop, where it's going to be one dealer and somebody who drives up, they get in the car? You will never see this hand-to-hand. So it's different things that we look into. So then it has to go to cameras of seeing a hand-to-hand, what we know can articulate it, but then also having an arrest team available to arrest a buyer, to bring it back to a dealer, to then get a quantitative kind of story to say, this one person sold this amount of CDS within an amount of time. So it's multifaceted. We have to look at the packaging of that area. Is it gel caps? Is it vials? Is it trash cans for marijuana? All this terminology. So we also do that and some other investigative skills that I won't go into, but that's what we compile together. I myself, I think Velti was there, and then the Commissioner, I have a hard stance when it comes to narcotics and narcotics enforcement, right? Myself and Velti, we came up in a different area where I like to do drug work. I didn't mind getting into a vacant. I didn't mind going covert. We both have been in drug lines buying. We were, I came up in a time when we actually posed as drug dealers. You can't do that anymore, right? We call them reversals. You don't do that anymore. But what I'm saying is, I am held to a different standard because I come from a different era, you know, almost 32 years in this game. So when I talk to commanders, when I talk to officers in reference to what their engagement is, their engagement looks different from mine. So it has to be taught in the academy, what is expected through them, through education and training, but also there's going to be some real-life experience of, this is what I thought I saw, this is what I did see, getting that to a State's Attorney and making that a now prosecutable case, right? It's also going to be a level of, for whatever reason, some individuals, you know, they have to then weigh, I see this open-air drug market, but I'm pending a call for service. So to the naked eye of that person at that intersection, driving by, walking by, it looks like the officer just drove by, and they didn't. Because now we're held to a mandate through the consent decree to say, we're responsible to getting to calls within, what, seven minutes now? So the officer's mind... So the officer's mindful, I gotta get to this call and I'm going to come back to that. But that person never sees the officer coming back. So it's a whole history of things that are going on in reference to this drug game and how we try to address it.
Yeah, I, yeah, great uh background on this D C. I just to clarify, I'm I'm talking less about enforcement and more about like our ability to answer the question like, is this getting better or worse, right? Like as a city or in a district in a neighborhood, like, like, how do we put together the data to answer that question?
I think it's to the to the first thing I said, it goes by the calls for service, the volumes of calls for service with the police responses, the visibility of foot officers and officers doing proactive patrol and business checks. How many arrests are in that area? But at the end of the day, growing up here, right? You can have enforcement and you can see the enforcement. But if, as I did, if we lived in a fourteen hundred block of Potomac or the seventeen hundred block of Chase Street, if there was drug dealing on that corner, my perception of it is different than someone who's just driving through. So someone who drives through can see it, but I live it. So even though it's historic locations, there may be actual work going on, but you still see it and you don't see it. I'm a big guy, right? When I go on these crash diets and stuff, these people see me every day, right? They don't see the work that I put in. But somebody who hasn't seen me for two months go, wow, you look great. Sometimes it takes a time to see the work because when you're living it every day, you don't see it the same.
And I I actually think we do have some data because what happens when you're talking about those who are suffering from drug addiction. They tend to commit the low level crimes in order to get the money for their addiction. And all those categories are down as well. Our burglaries are down not significantly, our larssnies are down. So even those are down. Um, but then you've got a, you're gonna have to talk about a bigger issue too, because you're talking about, and this is a whole another issue, the juvenile system. The that juvenile system of the revolving door of, and thankfully it slowed down a little bit under the new secretary. But um the young people who we who we get dealing drugs or using drugs or whatever it is, that's taken even less as an offense than a robbery or something else. So um and then you have to have the services, the wraparound services to be able to offer them once they go to court. And then hold them accountable for doing what they agree to in court.
Director, where you gonna?
What I'll say is when we're thinking about the work of dismantling drug shops, just to take what the chair said. Um, and and just if I may go back slightly to the Penn North um comment. I think there's a delineation of responsibilities here that is important. So the goal of dismantling a drug organization, I would associate that with the enforcement activity of BPD. When I'm thinking about the goals that we've established for the Penn North stabilization, they are things like mitigating the trauma and harm stemming from overdose events, reducing the risk of future overdose events, providing immediate and sustained support to Penn North residents, including older adults in the Penn North Plaza building, engaging and empowering our community to help co-create those solutions and increasing quality of life through environmental services. So some of those goals are things that we're partnering on with the Health Department and the Overdose Response Office. Um, but those are the kind of goals that a Monty would coordinate in that equation. I think part of the challenge is some of what is being asked for is also it would constitute an expansion of our scope of services. And the reason I focused on violence prevention in my presentation is because that is our charge from the mayor. So if we're discussing an expansion of that, and listen, we're always going to be a partner to BPD and we we've been doing a great job. I would push back against the notion that there are just ad hoc meetings about these things. We've built a consistent infrastructure in city government to coordinate that's meeting on a weekly basis. Honestly, a twice weekly basis because we do a blitz, we have a regular weekly meeting. We're reviewing the key areas of concern that come up and we're tracking our progress towards resolving them. Um, I know specifically if we think about um some of the issues, you know, Mr. Chair, that we've worked on with um in partnership with your office and community members. My teams had a consistent presence and engagement on York Road for the past few months. And I know just yesterday we engaged with four of the young men who are out there engaging in that illegal activity. We're not in a position to um arrest them in that moment, but we are having conversations with them about like, why are you out here? What are your needs? We are having those conversations, but I would say throughout months now of that sustained engagement, we haven't necessarily like pulled someone off the corner. I'm not going into that engagement saying my ultimate goal is dismantling this drug trafficking organization. Um, but we are going into that saying, we see young men out here who um are engaging in this activity and we want to help open the door to connection to other resources, services. We got, you know, two of the young men yesterday took our information and said they wanted to follow up with us. So that's after consistent, like week after week, showing up and building a rapport. And that's the kind of work that um we'll continue to do where it intersects with our work. But I think that's that's kind of why I struggle a little bit with the the question councilman of like, what data do we have around drugs? Because typically our foray into that work would be through an incident of violence that then happens to intersect with with a drug trafficking organization or a location where we would then see an organization on the ground.
I I appreciate that, Director, and and you you're right. Um, I I think, though, I'll ask this question. Do we consider this a priority? Yes, I I sure hope so. I no one should hesitate to say, yes, this is a priority, I would say, for the city. Uh, it's certainly a priority in our neighborhoods. It's certainly a priority for our businesses when they have folks dealing in front of their shops. It it and sometimes it helps those businesses because those folks may be shopping in those areas. But a lot of times it deters folks from shopping in those areas. You 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 talked about um um York Road in my district, literally right in front of my my district office, you know. This this past summer, I've been walking past drug dealers every day to go into my district district office. Um, and interestingly, one day, um, a couple of things have happened. This is now, it's now been multiple times that I've been in my office and someone has overdosed outside of my office. And I have to run out there with naloxone. One of the things I tried to do was to try to offer jobs to the young men in front of my office. Uh, try to have city agencies uh come out there and offer services, offer opportunities, alternatives of lifestyle. We we did that for a couple of weeks and we got actually some pretty good interest. We had some issues with follow through. But I think this is also, I believe, where Monty can be helpful in making sure that we can connect people to resources, jobs, services and otherwise that may be in this lifestyle today, but might be open to an alternative where they don't have to rely on drug money in order to to support themselves. So I think that's what I'm looking for for Monty. Um, and I realize from an enforcement perspective, it's BPD, it's the State's Attorney's Office, um, it's our federal partners. And they will strategically actually dismantle the drug organizations. But when you remove one organization, another one will pop in and we know that happens. It's whack a mole. So how do we change a given drug shop such that once we eliminate one organization, we discourage others from coming in? How do we ensure that from happening? That's going to take coordinating with the Health Department and making sure that we we dry up some of the demand from folks who are dealing with addiction. It's going to take neighborhood development. It's going to take facade improvement. It's going to take investing in housing. It's going to take investing in businesses. It's going to take draw job training and otherwise, things that we have various agencies across the city that do this work. And so I'm not suggesting at all that Monty is responsible for the whole plan, nor am I suggesting that BPD is responsible for the whole plan. But I would suggest, mostly because you guys talk to me a lot, that you understand what I'm trying to get to and might have the ability to pull together a plan that considers all of these considerations in partnership with the Health Department. So that that's what that's what I'm thinking about here. And I yeah, that that's what I'm.
But Mr. I guess I would say, Mr. Chair, what you just described, like, uh, it's exactly why a post G V R S takedown is one of our stabilizing criteria. So I would offer that that work is happening, maybe not in every location and every drug corner. But it's happening in those contexts and we're continuing to do the work of approving that concept and leveraging our presence so that we are, we are flooding the area with city resources so that we don't see just another group engaging in violence, engaging in drug trafficking coming in. Uh, but the work we do, we know when we also flood the area with outreach resources, we can also just as easily be displacing a drug market from one location to another. Um, and so.
So I I I am, I'm I'm looking through the slideshow because I'm trying to remember the the acronym. Um, M A I T F is a similar idea that we come in and we we flood the area with city services, you know, S Rs, boarding up vacant homes. And in much in the same way, Monty will come behind a shooting event and knock doors, talk to people, see if they need support services. That's great. Really important as an after action. But the the point here is, once we've identified that as part of our solution, we would expect that it would change the outcomes. And so if if that, if that is helpful, at least initially, how do we sustain that effort beyond, you know, a week after a shooting event? Or a week after an overdose event? You know, thirty thirty plus people overdose a couple of weeks ago. And and, you know, I think we we showed up and I I I appreciate the the mayor for holding cabinet meetings there for a couple of days. I think that was a really important step to show the seriousness and the severity of the issue. But but we still need to, we need to to tie our decisions to outcomes and determine whether or not they are actually working. And I don't think they're working yet. I don't think they're working yet. Uh, we have not dismantled any drug shops, any major ones. And if we have, we haven't done so intentionally in a way that we can point back and say that, oh, I stand corrected. Please.
We dismantled drug shops through the G V R S audit.
Then I think we should be talking about exactly all the steps that we took to dismantle that drug shop and start piloting that effort across the city. And 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 what we need to do to sustain that effort so that another drug shop does not come in. Do you understand what I'm asking for?
I do. I just, I I would like to point out and and maybe level set expectations. We 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 talk about dismantling drug organizations to things like, you know, dad teams and arrests and some other things comprehensively on the backend, some other things as well, to your point. The dismantling of a drug organization uh is not as easy as it sounds. We, for those of us who've been doing it for years, to to comprehensively go in and work from the bottom up and root out a drug organization to avoid displacement simply to another neighborhood's problem, which is obviously none of us want to do. It is, I I I think more labor intensive.
Years of investigative.
It it can take eighteen to twenty four months or you can be doing, you know, wires, all kinds of things. Federal help. When you work from the bottom up, uh, with the the street hitters, the street lieutenants, the money guy and officers, you gotta get the importation for the uh the supply chain to truly root it out. Each each drug shop is it's intense.
So this is the point. That's that's the police department. That's the state's attorney. That's our federal partners putting together a case to strategically remove a drug shop. But if we don't sweep in with the Health Department and other resources so that that the next drug shop doesn't show up, we're going to be doing that work in a couple of weeks again. And and that's my point here. If we're not working together and, you know, BPD, you know, throws drugs on the table and a bunch of guns and and we can say, look, we took down these kingpins, that's great. But there will be, you know, fifty more behind them indefinitely until we figure out how to to address the demand for drugs in that area and to invest in those neighborhoods. And that's what I'm asking for. I that's not a simple ask. But I I do, like, we all are smart here and we understand what that means. Because I would not, I wouldn't be surprised. I don't know where we remove this particular, uh, you know, drug organization. But I wouldn't be surprised if somebody's come in and now replaced them. You know, we we removed the one that was on York Road. And maybe six months later, another group of guys are back, different guys, never seen them before, and they're back now. Um, I had a a conversation uh last week with one of them. He was looking for a job. I didn't have one to offer him. And so there's an opportunity here if we just, if we just have a plan and can measure the progress on that plan. That that's what I'm looking for, guys. That's it. That's it.
I'll just add, um, Mr. Chair, in the example that um the Lieutenant Colonel mentioned with dismantling of that drug organization, that's exactly the scenario where post D V R S takedown, we would come in and begin to coordinate those efforts. While the situation in Penn North was not precipitated by an act of violence, it was obviously a a mass impact event that constituted a lot of trauma. The Health Department and Overdose Response Office led in the initial weeks of that effort. Um, but I also want to be really clear, my team is continuing to have a consistent presence on the ground there and doing everything from working individually with people to connect them to jobs, housing, really like low barrier employment, things that are challenging to find, getting um IDs, like basic needs. Um, and in addition to that, we're coordinating with the help, help of the Health Department and Overdose Response Office, service providers who are can be on hand and ready to accept people when they want to make that decision to go towards treatment. And so um we're doing this. I think my outreach staff, my team as a whole is small but mighty. Um, we're covering a lot of grounds. I think this is a, this is a huge scope. And so I think that's why you also hear us talking about the way that we've been prioritizing these um locations to date. Um, but also why I think from my part as Monty and and we're charged with maintaining the fidelity of our group violence reduction strategy that we're, while we have lessons to learn from G V R S, it is a group violence reduction strategy. And so we've seen many cities, including Baltimore in the past, attempt to use those um tenants of G V R S, the resources of G V R S to either move too quickly and go to too much of the city too fast or to move on to other issues when they feel like violence is under control. And so I I do, I do echo that caution of we have to be just as vigilant to make sure we're we're continuing to push the trend line down on violence and.
I agree. I I will say, and to my point earlier, I'm not asking you to boil the ocean here. I'm asking for a plan that we can pilot, test out, see if it works. If it doesn't work, we tweak it, we do something else. We start somewhere. That's what I'm asking for. It doesn't have to be Penn North. Penn North may be too complicated of a drug shop to dismantle. It it's one of our largest, if not our largest. Um, we can choose a smaller one if we need to, but I think the idea is like we have to have a theory of change. And I believe it's the agencies in this room that have the most ability in order to affect that change. And it's, we all bring different things to the table. Maybe the Housing Department could be in here as well. Housing and Community Development can be here as well to support businesses and and address the housing issues. But with the exception of that, I think we have the right people here. So I, you know, I I want to, and um, Mr. Vice Chair, is there any other questions you have? I I have a lot, so I want to make sure I share.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll just be super, try to be brief with this. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. The one, the talking about the blitzes, um, definitely appreciate the support in the Lexington Market area. Glad I was able to attend that one. Um, I've had some good conversations with Terrence. Um, I I do think that to the point of like, all the environmental impacts and something that we're looking at specifically over there, and I think it's a similar case with Penn North and a lot of the like bigger challenged areas, is like having a whole bunch of vacant uh and dilapidated properties, how it does like multiple bad things. You know, providing people places to to shoot up, um, communicating that the area is uninvested in, like all these types of different things. Uh, and so I think that I kind of envision maybe instead of the blitz, or instead of the sort of BPD led thing, having something more that's like a like a hyper-specific impact investment area or something like that, where we have a couple of blocks that that's being followed up on like a consistent basis. Because like we had our meeting with uh D H C D Code Enforcement and Legal and and they're working, you know, it's like, okay, how do we get these properties out of the current property owner's hands? Like, how do we get them to someone who will actually like do something that isn't terrible with them, right? Like, and so I just, just to say that I think as we're thinking through what the blitz becomes, I think D H C D has a really important role to play there. And just the the ownership and the the plans for the buildings, code enforcement, D H C Legal, I think have a really important role in some of our biggest challenge areas. Um, the oh, and just just kind of last one. And I and I know, you know, Tyler was with M G R and and not the expert, but you had the line about, you know, the, I think you said the individual has to make the decision to to seek treatment, but but if someone's addicted, they they like the, I think that is, they don't have the choice to seek treatment. And and I think that, like, they there's not, right, they're addicted. And and so having, we don't want to try to arrest our way out of the problem, but we do need some way to make people get treatment for drug addiction.
Right. And so are you suggesting that we just start taking people because they aren't ready to get treatment yet? Like, how 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 do you suggest we go about that?
Yeah, I don't know. It's it is, it is a tough one. It would be, but but I'm, but to me, and I'm not like trying to push on, I'm just saying that like, I mean, I think you see the I'm just saying that like, I mean, I think you see the, the, y'all know the challenge, right? But like, we have to do something to, I think like what, this whole idea of drug court and the drug diversions, everything, and like, if that is something that's scaled up or streamlined, I know there's pre-arrest type things. I, I don't understand the full thing, but I think that would be really helpful to, to better understand how that can be better used. And it may be law enforcement ladder, it may not be. But I just, I think that that is a really important part of this. And then my last thought on this. For the Health Commissioner, I'll just kind of lob out there that the, the idea of the overdose prevention centers, I, something I'm really interested in. I think the west side of downtown is a, is a really good candidate for this for a couple of reasons. I mentioned this to Dr. Deraza. We had a meeting yesterday, but as, as this is something that the, the mayor's office is looking into options on, I kind of want to just publicly state that both due to the, the need for it and it being in downtown, it's a little different from a residential neighborhood, the scale of the challenge, the number of buildings, which one of them could be used for that, you know, easily. It's just something that, as, as, you know, if the mayor's office is looking for sites, I would love to, you know, support that and throw that one out there. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I just want to, just listening to what we've been talking about, I think we have what you were already asking for. It's not big enough to do the things that you want to do at this time. But for example, you have brought up vacant houses because we've, we're at the lowest number of vacant houses in the city in a long time. We're under thirteen thousand. That's a lot of high number, but we were much, we're almost at fifteen or sixteen thousand. So those are things we work with the fire department. We work with the other agencies to board these vacant houses up. And with the lieutenant, what the colonel explained is exactly how we dismantle the drug organizations. But that takes thirty, sixty, ninety days with teams of fifteen and twenty officers. And almost every drug shop in the city is going to take the same amount. So we've got that. And you just have to kind of realize that none of our agencies, we have two thousand cops, two thousand twenty-six. Fifteen, ten years ago, we had thriving drug markets everywhere, out of control violence, and we had three thousand cops because the city agencies weren't, weren't working together. Now we're all working together. I just don't think anybody has enough resources to do everything that needs to be done in the city at the same time. And we're gonna, it's not gonna stop us. We're not using that as an excuse. But if we start to try and we can't go out and we're not going to arrest our way out. But when we do get that drug offender or drug person suffering from addiction in the court, the judges have got to give them something that's going to make them do something. And then we have to follow up. Or the state's attorney can do it before it gets to court. Because once we make the arrest, that's kind of out of, out of our hands. And we're not going to arrest our way out of it. We arrested a hundred thousand people one year and we still had three hundred homicides. But the agency still has to be, not solely, but mainly focused still on violence. Because ninety, ninety-two homicides in the city, our side is still, size is still way too many. We still, our per capita is still way too high. So we've got to keep our eye on the ball with the, with the violence. And our guy, our men and women are getting better. Some of the men and women have been officers for two or three years that never made a drug arrest because they weren't prosecuting and we weren't telling them to make them because it was, it was not going to be prosecuted. So they've got to get used to it. And not every drug arrest and drug investigation is done by, by group violence reduction strategy. Our officers are making drug arrests and doing investigations on their own because the detectives there do it every day. But the officers on the street and DAT teams, it's basically the patrol officers move to DAT teams, DAT teams move to, to GBRS or homicide or wherever else they want to go. So we've got to keep training our people. And we've only been back making drug arrests and investigations for a little over two years. And it's going to take us time. There's, I wouldn't even venture to guess how many open air drug markets there are in the city. I know there's a lot.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You know, Vice, you know, Vice Chair, I would also say, you know, to the PC's point, also to address some of your concerns, you know, year-to-date, I believe there was fifty-one blitzes done so far this year? Fifty-two, see?
So fifty-two what?
Fifty-two of those MADEF blitzes. We, you know, the MADEF task force. So, so we're strategically putting them where we need to be addressing them. Some are areas that like Penn North because of that. The other one was Old Town Mall, like I just spoke about. So I think we do have the blueprint. We do understand that there is crime prevention through, you know, environmental design. There are certain things that we have to look at the area because we do realize that there is a contagion of blitz. You mentioned vacancies, right? Right before this meeting at twelve o'clock, I was upstairs in room six forty. They had the One City Vacancy Prototype, where I was in a meeting for trying to figure out how do we get ahead of vacancies before it becomes a vacant? So I think strategically, we are looking for ways to address this issue. One thing that has been a concern of mine, and I think of all of ours, is, you know, when you look at Maryland, I believe there's a hundred and three opioid assistant programs through the state of Maryland. Baltimore City has seventy-nine percent of those. That's a problem. It's a problem that we're trying to address through, through this, this program. But unfortunately, when we have programs that are not being good partners, we have individuals who are preying on those who are coming to those programs, that becomes a whole host of other issues as independent. North area as in Lexington Market. So I think there's also has to be a good look at who our opioid provide, assistant providers are and the dynamics of that area of, to the PC's point, when you look at larceny's being down, burglaries being down, that feeds that drug addiction as well. So that is, that's an indicator that we are making some progress along the way. But that is a concern of mine. Another concern, and lastly, is that when you look at those individuals who are unfortunately overdosing, predominantly they're going to be black males. Predominantly, they're going to be between the ages of fifty-one and sixty years of age. Anyone under twenty-one years of age, there's only been twelve incidents of overdose. What this tells me through the Health Department, and please, I don't want to get in their realm, is we're talking about different degrees of narcotics that is having an effect on an older user. You know, someone who has been using for a long amount of time. Now, when you introduce fentanyl to it, so we have to also look at the population of those individuals in that area. And to your point, education, if they don't have what they need to get that good job, the education to go forward, if they don't have the job to then go to, to pay for the, the, the big house and the white picket fence, that also adds to that. As Colonel Velti and his shops and, and Monty and their people dismantle these organizations, there's another individual who is looking to fill it because the American dream is not real to them and they're trying to get their piece too. So we have to fill those small gaps through either education as well as job placement.
Thank you, D.C.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge Councilwoman Porter from the 10th District. Join us. I wanted to ask a couple of questions. And the Vice Chair mentioned some of the courts and drug court, stuff like that. One of the efforts that the mayor recently reconstituted was the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. And I know, I, is Monty sort of helping to pull together the effort there? And so the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, CJCC, convenes federal, state, local official, officials, judges and otherwise to address public safety issues across the city. It's been a longstanding body that has really helped to coordinate a lot of efforts. Has the issue of opioids been discussed in any of those meetings?
I don't believe it has. We've only had, I think, one meeting or two?
I think maybe two so far, and the newly reconstituted meeting with the state. So now the governor's office has brought that meeting together. We now have judges at the table along with us. But I think we meet bi-monthly and I can't recall if this was a specific topic.
Tomorrow, no, it hasn't been a, tomorrow is a, is a meeting, but the agenda's already set. But we do have the right people in the room for that because we have, the mayor sits in himself, with two of the administrative judges and members from the governor's office. So it is the right place. It is just getting started so we can bring that, it can be one of the...
Do we have an intention to bring it up? Is that part of the agenda or?
We can, we can suggest it to the, the person who's overseeing it. The one meeting, I think I just, I think I said, did I say it was tomorrow?
Yes, it is tomorrow.
I thought about it, I couldn't remember if I said it.
I already knew it was tomorrow, that's why I asked the question. Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm leading to the question here. Maybe the suggestion here, we should be bringing that up in the CJCC. And I think it is a great opportunity for us to the effect of Drug Court and other efforts that we can work with the judicial system to make sure that we're providing services for folks that are dealing with addiction or associated with drug markets. Once again, a comprehensive plan, we'd be thinking about how we can coordinate these efforts. There's so much there for us to do. And so I just want to make sure we don't miss the opportunity, since we will be meeting tomorrow, to bring this issue up in the CJCC meeting. I want to ask a, a question. So one of the things that came up when we had the overdose event at Penn North was a system that used to exist and I don't believe exists now, which is the BAD Batch Notification System. And I guess there's a question for the Health Department. Is that, is that up and running or has it lapsed? Do we still have the BAD Batch Notification System? If you can please come up. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Jennifer Martin, Deputy Commissioner for, for Population Health and Disease Prevention at the City Health Department. We do not currently have the BAD Batch Program up and running. It was a public-private partnership between the Health Department and another organization. And that relationship came to an end several years ago. We have had some conversations recently internally about looking at how and how we could reinstate a program like BAD Batch, but we do not have a timeline for reinstating such a program yet.
That's super helpful. When was the last time we sent out the notification from the previous system?
I would need to go back and then look at our records. I believe it ceased and sunsetted in 2018.
Okay. And what would it take for us to stand it back up? What's holding us back?
We would need to look at where the data would be coming from around true BAD batches. So do we, we have an overdose spike and cluster response process in place already? But if we're talking about BAD Batch in terms of the, this drug supply maybe dangerous, then we would need to make sure that we have good data to send those alerts out.
So what do we need in order to get it back off the ground and get it running again? I, I guess the, the question here is, was it ultimately helpful? Did we see a benefit from the program? I would presume we did, but...
Hmm. That is a, a very good question. The program was not under me at the time that it was up and running. So I don't, I don't have data to really evaluate the effectiveness of it. I think that we know anecdotally that people who signed up for those alerts appreciated them, but I don't know that we have any, I don't know that we collected any hard data to really evaluate the effectiveness of it.
I see the acting commissioner is standing behind you. Acting Commissioner.
Just wanted to give an assist to Deputy Commissioner Martin.
Sure.
We had a great meeting actually today.
Great.
Talking about overdose communications and what we could bring back and what we could institute that would make the system even better. So those things are in the works. Like Deputy Commissioner Martin shared, a lot of it has to do with making sure that we have the right partnerships and we get appropriate and accurate data that we can share back out. And so a lot of it is, what you're already hearing in this room, coordination that's been happening over the years, but now figuring out how we take it to the next step. You've had great questions, all of you all, about what it means really to start to have outcomes, but eventually get to impact. And that's really what you're talking about. And so that work is happening in conjunction with every agency that you've heard from and many more. But thank you for the question. And we will find out the legacy timeline and get that to you about the BAD Batch alerts and the possibility of bringing that back if we can get the appropriate resources to do so.
Yeah, that would be really helpful. To that effect, maybe in thirty days, maybe in a month's time, would it be okay if you guys come back with that information? If you're able to get it sooner, sure. But that information and a clear understanding of what it, what it takes in order to stand back up the BAD Batch system? And if there is an intention to stand up the BAD Batch system again, that'd be really, really helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I know that the, the system isn't in place, but communication has become so much better with the agencies. Like, I get, I usually get a call from Chief Wallace if they have a couple overdoses in a certain area. And then we call around and make sure that all the agencies are on board within, within a short period of time, once we realize there's been a number of overdoses in an area. And then we, we work backwards to see what the drug is, if in fact it was a BAD Batch or whatever, whatever it is. That's, that's how we all came together with Penn North and we've done it a few other times since then for when we've had one or two or three in an area. So even though it's not formal, we still get it, the agencies involved.
That's really helpful. Any questions? All right. I want to turn back over to the conversation about how we handle open air drug markets. We talked about an instance where we were able to dismantle a drug organization. I'm really curious how we handle efforts after that. So after we've maybe taken down a group, what happens after?
So typically on the Monty's side, we'll get a notification from BPD confirming that a, a takedown has happened. And then typically within a matter of a day or two, we are getting out on the ground and then initiating the coordinated neighborhood stabilization response process. So doing everything from the initial canvas with the letter from the mayor that lets people know why we're there, that something happened in their community and where they can reach us for assistance. We pull the, the data so that we understand from a three-one-one, nine-one-one perspective, what are those other issues of concern that have already been reported that we can begin to work on and coordinate our inter-agency partners around? And then are starting to, the work of developing what those goals are through our conversations with community. So something that's typically tailored to the, to the matter at hand, tailored to the specific community and based on the, the feedback that we're getting directly from residents there.
I'm curious, in those instances, do we coordinate with the Health Department at all? The idea being that we've taken out the supply. Now we need to deal with the demand, folks who are dealing with addiction still and are going to be looking for, looking for drugs somewhere. We have an opportunity perhaps to, to sweep in there, to support those people, to help steer them towards treatment. Is that something we do today or is that coordinated or automatic in any way?
I would say it's a part of our process and increasingly so. It's definitely something that we've been in conversation with the Health Department and Overdose Response Office around, just given the fact that you mentioned. And so while that may not always be our primary charge as we're doing some of the other aspects of stabilization, we recognize that it's, it's a key, it's a key aspect of our stabilization work. And we can't ignore that component of it. We have to figure out what the, what the correct resources are, but we have to make sure our public health partners are similarly alerted so that they can, they can play that role and make sure that they're reaching people who may otherwise, you know, be left. But I would say we've had instances where we're doing joint canvases with the Health Department, with the overdose team. And that's something that for future takedown events, particularly as we discuss what can be unintended consequences from those events on a public health level, that we are, you know, increasingly coordinated in that area.
Yeah, I, whenever we do get a plan eventually, hopefully, I'm going to keep asking, I would like to see that as part of our consideration because it's a heck of a lot of work from our Police Department, from folks who are prosecuting and otherwise, to make sure that we keep those... from folks who are prosecuting and otherwise to make sure that we keep those folks off the streets. But if we don't actually go in and make sure that the demand isn't still there, as I mentioned earlier, we're just going to have, you know, someone else come in to fill that supply. So.
Mr. Chair, may I offer something on this point? And I think you spoke a little earlier, I think also Councilman Blant are just around like how to take what's coming out of the multi-agency inspection task force and like grow that into something more sustained. And you spoke about like, is there an area that the city could identify to start to do some of this work? One of the areas where the city has, I think already stood up something like that, the, the work of dismantling open-air drug markets isn't the sole focus, but it's in a, this area that has a historic open-air drug market of Lexington Market. The collaborative that the city has stood up on that end. I know Chief Nash can speak a little bit about that if that's of interest to the committee, just to talk about really the infrastructure that's being built there. Some of the work that we're, you know, in effect piloting there with the goal of having that long-term sustained outcome.
Sure.
I think that's a great idea. And I think that the chair had made a previous point about having something to use as kind of a model for testing how this works and doesn't work. And, and obviously that's not the only thing getting focused on in the Lexington Market area, but it is a massive, it is massively important aspect of it. And how these, the services, the, the, the social services, the built environment stuff, how all these other things play in on top of law enforcement. Yeah, so I, that would be, I think, helpful. Yeah.
Set it. Hi, Terrence Nash, I'm the chief of the Group Violence Reduction Strategy. I have the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. I'm also the co-project manager for the Lexington Market Collaborative. It's a collaborative that just started, let's say about maybe two months ago, three months ago. But to answer your point about just about takedowns, just to be clear, I don't know if it was said, I think GPRS has had 16 massive takedowns of drug trafficking organizations closely tied to violence since its inception. We started about a year, no, Terrence, what was that about? Six months ago? Six months ago, working with Moore and the Health Department on a response post-takedown to make sure that, especially when we're dealing with shops that are dealing with fentanyl, that we are addressing any addiction issues, overdose issues and whatnot. As part of that work, we developed an infrastructure that we brought into what's called the Lexington Market Collaborative. That was an initiative that was mandated by the city administrator to Monti to develop a comprehensive management structure looking at person-based, place-based and in law enforcement resources and making sure that they're coordinated with one another and that we are following the data to make sure that not only are we doing the work, but the work is getting us the outcomes that we want. Safer, cleaner, healthier communities. And so part of that is we have the Health Department, Baltimore Police Department, MTA, University of Maryland Police, Embrace, Moore. We've got a lot of people. HIDA and HIDA helps us with a bunch of things. So it's their overdose response section where they help us track data, including use of their OD map so we can see spike alerts in overdoses. So if you have any questions, I'll answer them. There's a lot going on, so I could ramble on for like an hour or two about it, but.
Yeah, it's something I'll, I'll dig into with you later. I love this, the person-based, place-based, law enforcement, multiple aspects. It's, it's, I think it's to the point where like, part of this is like y'all are, the city across a bunch of different agencies and the Mayor's Office and the State's Office is already doing a lot of the stuff we're asking for, but it's having it packaged in a way that we can also, it all syncs together and we can, you know, communicate that. Understand, communicate to constituents, all that type of stuff is, is important too. So it's somehow followed with Terrence on.
And it's not just city resources, obviously it's city resources, social services, resources also, state resources such as GOCAP, state health and obviously federal resources with HIDA.
Yeah.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions for the Health Department.
Sorry about that.
So in, in the last hearing, we heard testimony from a former employee that, that during COVID, overdose response was explicitly called not a priority. Can you confirm whether overdose prevention was deprioritized during 2020 to 2022? I know you were not here, you're, you're, you're still not fully here. So. And is it a top priority now?
It is absolutely a top priority and it was a priority even during COVID. But as you can imagine, and I know you all have a memory of what was happening in Baltimore, I have a memory of what was happening everywhere else. It was still a priority, but COVID was the top priority at the time because especially at the beginning, there was no vaccine and people were dying at high rates of one thing. And so it was all hands on deck nationally to figure out how we could stop the pandemic in its tracks. Now, for the Health Department, it's always been a priority. Even pre-pandemic overdose and addressing overdose in this community was a priority and continues to be. There are several systems that are in place that prove that, that predate the pandemic. Now it's of highest priority to the point that we understand that we are getting ready to set up a entirely new division within the Health Department, the Public Behavioral Health Division, that will add additional resources and staff to our existing resources to really make this a top priority for the Baltimore City Health Department. And the nice thing about this division, and I'll outline this a little bit more in my presentation on Thursday, is that it leaves room for even more flexibility to really look at behavioral health more broadly within Baltimore City. That is really what needs to happen. That's why we're having all of these discussions. That's why you are seeing so many stakeholders, groups, agencies in this space trying to do this work. I can tell you that I am from a place where that was not the case. And so even though it feels like it's slow, even though it feels like things aren't happening, I can guarantee you, because I have a comparison, that things are happening here that simply are not happening in other places that are dealing with the scale of issues that we are dealing with. Either because there are no resources or not enough resources or there's no will, political will to address these issues. And so yes, this is a top priority for Baltimore City Health Department.
I'm really glad to hear that. I would assume that that would be the answer. I think a lot of people are counting on us. They're counting on us to get this right. And it, it takes everyone doing their part. I'm, I'm curious, during that period, 2020 to 2022, who, who was, was there someone responsible for monitoring overdose data? And if, if they were like, at what point did they ever, if they did, raise the alarm internally that things have gotten to a boiling point?
Let me grab my notes.
Okay, sure.
So I can get the dates right. So you're specifically talking about 2022.
Yeah, 2022, 2022. Peak, peak COVID.
So a couple of things. Since 2021, Baltimore City Health Department's overdose prevention program and maternal and child health bureau have been working collaboratively to address prenatal and postpartum opioid and other drug use. A landscape assessment of services in the perinatal period for people who use drugs was completed in 2023 and this work is ongoing. And the programs are working towards implementing recommendations made in that landscape assessment. In addition, for our syringe disposal drop boxes and our harm reduction vending machines, the Health Department has been working since 2022 to plan for and install syringe disposal drop boxes and harm reduction vending machines in Baltimore. In an effort to address syringe litter in the city, the Health Department is purchasing syringe disposal drop boxes. Syringe disposal drop boxes offer a convenient and safe way for individuals to dispose of sharps. And the Health Department is using data and community-informed process to determine where to locate the syringe drop boxes. As of April 1st, 2025, there are three of these drop boxes with several more planned by the end of the calendar year. Now, we know that you all are getting multiple calls from constituents, right? But those are just a few examples of what the Health Department has been continuously doing. You have to remember that the Health Department first established an overdose program in 2015 under Commissioner Nguyen in response to the growing opioid overdose crisis in Baltimore City. And since November 2018, the program has been the, a part of the Division of Population Health. But now we recognize that it's time to move beyond that and set up a new division where we're really focused in on that. And we have the staff and the expertise to focus in on the overdose crisis and what we're seeing in our communities.
I'll, I'll tell you why I asked that question. Because this whole exercise, I think is an opportunity for us to learn as a city. And I would suggest during, during the pandemic, we, we, we did have COVID, a global pandemic that literally shut down the world for two years. During that time, we still saw over 1,000 people die from opioids. And during that time, that wasn't our top focus, still COVID. But what people probably don't realize is more people die from opioids than from COVID. So what it tells me is that we must learn from that decision. If we don't ask the questions, if we don't appreciate that during that tough time, we still had another issue that was just as tough, if not tougher, that we're still dealing with right now, we'll never learn from it. That's why I asked that question. And I, I, I feel pretty confident that no matter what, it's going to be the Health Department that will wave that red flag when we're having issues on this issue and we're counting on you as the incoming commissioner. We're counting on you. The stakes are incredibly high. I want to make sure that we never take our eye off the ball again. My next question for the budget, did the population health folks make a request for any increased funding to deal directly with the growing rate of, with the growing rate of substance abuse disorders in the city? Was that a request during the budget process?
I will call up Deputy Commissioner Martin to answer that specific question.
Thank you, Chair. I recall that that was a question that was posed by Mr. McDermott at the last hearing. There is no population health budget within the Health Department. Our budget is categorized around the service categories that are in the city's budget book. So there is no public health budget.
What service then should I properly be referring to under which population health falls under?
So there are several service categories that make up the Population Health Division within our department. Those include the Substance Use and Mental Health Service Category 307, Emergency Services 315, 303 Clinical Services, as well as 720, which is HIV Services for the uninsured.
So did we, did we make express requests around any of those services around opioids and addiction across the city based on the growing problem that we saw?
I would have to go back and look at those, those budget requests specifically. We likely did make some requests that were related to these Community Risk Reduction Services Program. But as I think folks here are generally aware, you know, in the Health Department, we have a lot of braided funding for our programmatic work. So there are general funds that support activities that are generally braided together with grants that can come from state, federal or even private sources.
Would you be willing to provide?
If I may, what you're hearing here is how budgets for local public health departments are often, right? So we are heavily grant-funded. And because of that, when you have different grants for different services, you can't necessarily cross over those services, right? So if I have a grant at the Health Department for syringe services and I need more money, I can't borrow that money from another program to fund the syringe services. So what I will tell you is that Baltimore City Health Department, after I've been here, this is week six, is no different from what I was seeing in Memphis, where we had to really figure out how to effectively braid funding to make sure that we're providing the services that people need. That is happening here. And I can tell you once again that the agency coordination that you see is just another layer of that.
Got it. To that effect, for the request that may have been made, would you be willing to provide that request or those requests to the committee?
Councilman, so those are deliberative documents from agencies to the mayor as part of his role as the chief executive to make the budget. What we can do is if, if you track it, if you add it.
Why would, why wouldn't they share that with the city council?
Again, those are deliberative documents from agencies to the mayor, who's the chief executive officer of the city, as part of his duty to create the budget. It's a deliberative document. What we can do is if you take, if.
I appreciate that.
Add it to the follow-up.
I'll push back for for consideration. So it's appropriate for an agency to have an idea about how to resolve a major issue in the city and tell the mayor and not tell the council?
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that the document is, the document itself is deliberative, is a communication from an agency head to the mayor as a part of his duty as the chief executive officer of this city and formulating a city's budget. And what I'm committing, what I'm saying to the committee is that if you add it to the list of committee follow-up requests, I will take that back and we will let you know if that is a document that we can provide.
I'll say this, I appreciate that. I, I, I don't agree with it. This body's responsibility is oversight. This body's responsibility is making sure that the agency has the appropriate resources in order to carry out its mission and especially to tackle its highest priority as just stated. And in an instance where we are not even aware of something like that, it makes it very difficult for us as a council to be effective. And as an entity, that being the mayor and city council, the, the gap in information on issues like this, one seems silly. We are all elected officials here. It's our duty to be, you know, responsible for the city agencies and certainly the mayor's to make the decision on whether or not he would recommend that in his budget, but to not even know that they're recommending some changes to an agency, I think is. But please put the request forward. Seeing a budget request, I think, is a pretty simple request, but nonetheless. Acting Commissioner, I still have a couple of questions and then I will eventually come to a close here.
Councilman Porter, do you have any questions?
All right, thank you. In the strategic plan around opioids, you guys call out buprenorphine as a critical intervention. We have not yet had our hearing on buprenorphine. Would you support authorizing paramedics to administer buprenorphine after an overdose event?
And Councilman, on that, the commissioner has not had the opportunity to review that piece of legislation. He's only been here for two weeks. So we, we won't, we can't get into whether or not there's support there from the Health Department. That, that is a larger conversation.
How about this, is it medically advisable in your capacity as a doctor to offer buprenorphine after the administration of naloxone?
I appreciate your question, Chair Conway. This is what I'll say to you. In my professional opinion, it is always important as a public health professional. to not only give you my medical opinion, but also have the chance, like Tyler said, to review the legislation, right? So especially in medical realms, you can have legislation written by people who are not medical professionals, right?
Like me.
And, and because of that, the legislation may not make sense for the actual situations on the ground. The police department understands what I'm saying. Monsey understands what I'm saying, right? So I could sit up here and tell you as a medical professional, this is what happens, but I haven't had a chance to review it.
The legislation aside, offering buprenorphine after the administration of naloxone as a medical doctor, is that a sound way to help someone deal with the effects of withdrawal?
Well, I'm going to give you a very public health answer, right? It depends. It depends on the situation. It depends on the individual. It depends on what's happened. It depends on the paramedics on the scene and what their training is. It depends on if you have a crisis team out. It depends on so many other factors. So it's impossible for me to answer that question in the way you would like for me. It is not a yes or no answer in this case.
So buprenorphine as a drug, is it safe?
Yes.
Okay. Can buprenorphine be offered after naloxone?
It can.
Having the option available is a net positive or net negative?
Once again, this is where we get into the legislation, right? So what I will tell you is this, right? Like I said, I'm giving you very public health answers, right? But what I will tell you is this, the Baltimore City Health Department is very much committed to bringing you sound, evidence-based strategies to conquer this problem, right? So that means that I get to go off and my team is back here taking copious notes. And I get to say, tell me every situation in which this could be a great intervention. What cities are using this as an intervention now? What staffing would we need to be able to do this? And what are the resources required to make this actually successful? That is the responsible way for me to answer you in this moment.
Lots of qualified answers and I understand. Um, I, I just, I think, um, we are dealing with quite an issue here with opioids and overdoses and addiction in our city. And for us to not reasonably consider, um, which the evidence is very strong, uh, that having it available can be quite helpful. I understand you have to qualify your statements because you want to review bills and do your research. I totally respect that and understand. But what I don't want to happen is we sit here for a year and we have not reviewed the legislation. We have not discussed it in committee. We have not provided a plan on how to address open air drug markets. We've not responded to requests for the committee. There is no sense of urgency and you are just now coming into this, this position. I don't want to find that you end up in that same seat. I'm really counting on you, Commissioner, soon to be Commissioner, to, to do the job the right way and to be honest in your dealings. Because when I ask you a question as a medical doctor, I would hope that you would give me your, your answer honestly and, and not qualify it because of things.
No, I'm qualifying it because that's the responsible thing to do. But what I will tell you is this, I agree with you. We do not have a minute to waste. The community has waited long enough to know how we're going to continue to not only improve outcomes, but make a real impact in this issue, right? And I've had the opportunity over the last six weeks to talk to many community members, go to many events, visit some of these areas that you are talking about. And I understand that people are tired. But I also understand that there is a lot of work that has been done ahead of me coming into this environment. Um, and so I want to make sure that I lift that up as well because there are a lot of people here who are very much committed to making sure that we are all aligned in how we're addressing this issue.
I would, I would have liked to see a comprehensive plan around opioids include an effort like this. It was a direct recommendation I made to the administration. It's not in that plan. In fact, we have in that plan an effort to increase access to, uh, low level access to buprenorphine. But we know that when people call our fire department and folks show up, we know that person's an addict or dealing with addiction nine times out of 10. And so if we have an opportunity to help them, one, deal with the immediate impacts of withdrawal, but then two, help them take the next step towards recovery. And we fail to even consider the bill, we should be ashamed of ourselves. So I ask you, I ask you as a medical doctor to do your due diligence. Just, just if, if it were your patient, how would you think about that issue? If you were trying to save someone's life, which I would assure everyone here is trying to do, save lives, how would you handle that situation? That's all I'm asking.
It's a fair question. Thank you.
Um, the, I'm going to cap this out. I'm going to ask again, for a comprehensive plan for open air drug markets. Um, I, I want the police department. I want Monsey. I want the Health Department. Uh, noting that this is the highest priority of the Health Department. And I do believe that the Health Department can be a, should be the partner that can help steer how to do this correctly. That you guys come together and think about what we do, how we can use our resources to strategically dismantle open air drug markets. It doesn't have to be our largest one. It can be a small one. And I want to understand our theory of change. I want it in writing. I want to know what actions we're taking and what we expect to come from those actions. In 60 days, two months, we've had 364 days and no response. If this is the highest priority for the city, it'd be really hard to tell from the outside. Tyler, you got that? Thank you. Any questions before we wrap up? Uh, we have public testimony. All right. We have two folks who have testified. We're going to afford, uh, two minutes for public testimony. Uh, please come up to the mic, uh, and please state your name clearly for the record. Uh, first I have up Carl, Carl Green.
Uh, please turn it on. Good afternoon, everyone. It is great to see you all here today. I had a beautiful speech that I had prepared for everyone, but I just wanted to put emphasis on the need for peers and harm reduction. As a child who suffered with, um, early S U D, no direction, two parents who had substance abuse issues on top of mental health, on top of living in poverty. More police didn't help me. Being arrested did not help me. When I moved to Baltimore City and met peers, harm reduction peers and people that don't necessarily work in recovery, but have been through it and showed that you can overcome it and can believe in you. I believe that this missing factor that was missing in the last town hall meeting with the mental health, um, and holding people accountable, we were missing peers. We need client-based care. We need to meet people where they are. I live two blocks from Lexington Market. I do pro bono work down there. I take my portable wifi and my laptop and I take them to Lexington Market and I see what every individual needs because if our traumas are unique in the way that we heal, the way that we help has to be just as unique or else the cycle of mass incarceration and Big Pharma continues. We've seen how manipulative the advertising was for opioids, right? Do not crush or else the effects are way worse. That is manipulation. And so the people that I work with and serve are looking for second chances at Lexington Market. But if I have a drug charge, where are these places that I can go to get the help? If I have $900 in SSI, but no affordable housing to go to, I'm going to go to these open air drug markets. If we cater to the people that go here every day and we see what they need. You want your data, you'll get it from your peers. You'll get it from your, your people who are dedicated in the community. You will get your data. It's going to be a lot because people may need housing to start for recovery. People may need mental health to start. But the goal is to give them their power back. If no one gave me my power back, I wouldn't be able to sit on the board holding the harm reduction seat today. Thank you all.
Thank you, Carl. Appreciate you coming out to listen and also provide your perspective. Uh, next up, I have Marcus Pollak. You gotta, you gotta dance to it. You should turn it on. Wait one second.
I can say a couple of words in between the syncopation if you want.
One more second. I don't want, I don't want you, everyone to be distracted as you're.
Absolutely.
Unless, unless you can sing it to a tune.
That I won't do.
All right, we're just going to go ahead.
Well, let me, let me first, uh, thank you, Councilman Conway, for pressing on this issue of developing a plan. Uh, I think that, uh, that is the right way to go. Uh, it creates accountability. But there are some questions there. Let me just first also, uh, recognize Baltimore City Police Department, uh, Monsey, the Department of Health and others who have been a part of, uh, driving down this horrible spate of, uh, violence that we've seen over the last couple of years. While 92 was too many, I would agree. It's a far cry from one a day that we've seen even in our lifetime. So I, I want to suggest to you that this is an opportunity to recognize what can happen with collaboration. And I think that is really the essence of, of what it is that I want to say. Uh, again, my name is Marcus Pollak. I'm part of a group of folks that, uh, uh, make up a research collaborative that have been looking at this issue of violence and in particular drugs for a very long time. Uh, if you know anything about Baltimore, you know that, uh, the culture of drugs is deep, going back, uh, probably to, to time even before you were born. Uh, so, well, yeah. The, so this is more than a challenge. I mean, it is for us in Baltimore City, it is the kind of thing that, uh, if we can get our arms around it and drive it down to a point where we have no homicides, I, I think that, uh, that will be a huge accomplishment for us all. Let me just say something about, uh, uh, the, the question about, uh, open air drug markets. They're markets because there is a market for the drugs. And this idea of, uh, the demand reduction, I think is the right one. The officer, the chief here has, uh, uh, aptly suggested to us that you can't arrest your way out of this problem is true. But coordinating, creating the pressure for one to think about going into treatment when they probably didn't have such thoughts is, is probably not a bad, uh, place to be. Uh, let me also say that, uh, when we talk about, uh, the demand reduction, we know that prevention is key. And the good news, I think, is that we don't need to know much more, that the knowledge is out there, that we have to bring it to a place under a plan that can be used as an accountability measure for us to know what it is that we're doing, which brings me to the other point, which is performance. As we talk about the, the opioid crisis, uh, if we talk about violence prevention, what I find to be a, a question is, what are we shooting for? Bad choice of words. What are we looking to drive to? I, you know, there was a time, even in my lifetime, my hair is gray. I, I recognize that. So I've been around a while. But 60,000 addicts was the number that we used for a very long time. I used to say, where does that number come from? Uh, and quite frankly, I haven't really gotten that answer yet after all these many years. What I would say is that we need to have at least a baseline of what it is that we need to be changing. And we certainly have the technology. We got a lot of smart people in this city that can create the methodology and provide that level of fidelity that we need. There should not be a question there. And, uh, Councilman Conway, you know that what gets measured gets managed. Uh, and when you put performance goals to a problem with smart people as is represented in this room, I think that we will see a chance. The other thing I will say finally is that, uh, while there is leadership that has brought us here today to answer these questions, what I'm suggesting to you that there may be a lack of leadership to get the job done. The, uh, what was it? The, the, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council has been around for a very long time and it's had its challenges. Uh, I can remember a time when it was, uh, primary.
Mr. Pollak, I want to make sure you come to an end here.
Yeah, I am. I'm just going to, going to make one other point here that, that the place to have the subcommittee to do the work that you were trying to get done with the captains of industry is right there. And then I'm going to say one more thing, and that is that the question about how you create prevention with young people was answered years ago by the Eisenhower Foundation that did a longitudinal study about what makes for a resilient young person. They found three things that, uh, that are, that have been with us since that time. That is, they need a safe place to be. They need caring and authentic adults. And they need opportunities for leadership. And when you do those things, you get what you're looking for. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. Appreciate you coming out. That is all we have for testimony for signups. If there are any other folks looking to testify who are here, please come right up, state your name. Uh, and we will give you a little bit over two minutes, just to be fair. Uh, you press the button on the right.
Sorry. Hi, my name is Beth Hawks. I live in Pig Town and my business is in Fells Point. If you know me well enough.
If you could move the mic down a little bit so we can hear you.
I have been going to police meetings. I'm short, but mighty. Um, since Bealfield was the major of the Southern District. I'm a nerd. I go to meetings. I go to blitzes. I go to crime walks. I'm furious because as the residents of Baltimore City, our quality of life is plummeting. I just walked through the parking lot, the gravel area out there. A guy was shooting up out there. We have, when I heard you say that we have 79% of the opioid treatment centers in Baltimore City, I was at my store. I shut the door and came here. I was like, oh, how can we ever get over this? We're on the fourth wave of the opioid epidemic. We started out with OxyContin, then it went to heroin, then it went to fentanyl. Now it's Trank. I talk to the addicts. I go out. I give them water. I give them food. I talk to them. Why do you have an open wound? And that's a whole nother thing. They can't get into treatment centers with open wounds and wheelchairs. Why are we seeing all these people with amputated limbs because of Trank? And they tell me, they said that they need it to get high. These people are lovely. They have children. They want to be home at Christmas, but they can't because the drug is so great. But our lives matter too. I remember the day when people were hesitant to smoke a joint in public. Now they've got a needle in their arm or they're shooting up between their toe and they tell us to wait. We can't sit out on our stoop and visit with our neighbors. Children can't sit at a bus stop and wait for the bus because there's needles everywhere. Ms. Porter understands. I talk to her all the time. I email everybody. I call 911. I call 311. I do 311 online. We're trying. And it's, I walked to Penn North. I didn't have. We're trying. And it's, I walked to Penn North. I didn't have, you know, police protection. I go to all these communities. I talk to people. We need help. And I respect each and every person that's trying in this room, but the residents matter too. We, we need to say no. We're getting another one on Washington Boulevard that we all fought against. So right now we have about six or seven in Pig Town alone. How do we ever survive? One of the best businesses in the neighborhoods leaving. I have a building across the street from my home owned by Paul's Place. It's what, between, we keep hearing these numbers, six to 10 million dollars. It's basically a homeless encampment. All night, they're out there shooting up drugs, screaming all night long. And the drug dealers drive up and deliver the drugs. There are certain streets that we all know. I think that we need to bring in those big floodlights and blast the, the known. And then you need to take the houses away from these, these absentee landlords that we know these are these LLCs or buying blocks. Take them! So I apologize for not signing up beforehand, but I was watching on Charm TV. I adore this man. I appreciate you so much. I'm here for you all. I am fighting for Baltimore City every day. I fight that it's not a shithole, it's not a dump, and we don't need the National Guard. We need concerned citizens and everybody in the city to come together and to listen to us, and we'll listen to you, and we'll help you. But we need help.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you interrupting your data to come out and that you were even watching it on Charm TV.
I was watching on Charm TV.
Yeah. And, and I, I share a lot of your sentiments and that, that's why we're having these tough conversations. These are, I don't want to have to push these agencies in the way that I'm pushing them, but I, I think we need to understand that people like you have these issues and they complain to people like us. And we need to then relay those sentiments to the agencies. And I want to let you know, we are, we're trying to do everything we can to make sure that we address these issues and that we are steadfast in our effort to address not just the open air drug markets, but generally opioids. And, and we want to make sure we're helping people into recovery and keeping them in recovery. But it, you know, this can go a long way. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Alright, that, I believe, is the last of testimony. Going once, going twice, testimony is closed. I want to thank you all for coming here today. Once again, the, the follow-up that I would like to see from the agencies and collaboration in 60 days' time would be a written comprehensive plan for how we know, we, we plan to address and strategically close open air drug markets. I, I really don't want to have to come back here and go through dates again. So I, I appreciate the work you guys are doing and I want us to continue doing it at a higher level. Thank you all. This hearing is in recess.